Are we ready? Did I get the thumbs up? All right, I would like to call, to order the Selectmen's meeting of Wednesday, January 16th at 2:30 PM. Prior to taking the roll call, I would like to announce the remote participation of one of our members. As Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, I would like to announce that in accordance with the procedures described in 940 CMR 29.10, Section 7, Member Chaz Sexton-Duranian will be participating remotely in today's meeting, where his physical attendance would be unreasonably difficult. A speaker phone is being utilized, so all persons present at the meeting shall be clearly audible to each other. A quorum of the body is physically present as required by MGL Chapter 30A, Section 20D. The member participating remotely may vote and shall not be deemed absent for the purposes of MGL Chapter 39, Section 23D. All votes taken during any meeting in which a member participates remotely shall be by roll call vote. Copies of documents or exhibits reasonably anticipated to be discussed during the meeting have been distributed to the member participating remotely. Such documents shall be part of the official record of the meeting and shall be listed in the meeting minutes and retained in accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, Section 22. Thank you. So could I have a roll call, please?
Joe Schenk, present.
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, present.
Veronica Cal, present. I'd like to announce that the tape is, the meeting is being recorded and will be on YouTube after the fact. It is also being broadcast live on Channel 9. So, on to 1.3, Chairman's additions or deletions. I have a few. The first is to add Section 3.3, appointment of members to the Flag Committee. This is as a result of last night's meeting with the Flag Committee. I would like to add Section 5.1.6 for a discussion of the wall that heals. And 5.1.7, I would like to add decorum at meetings. And 5.1.8, the discussion around the open meeting law announcement that just came out, allowing us to continue with Zoom meetings. So those are my additions. Do you all have anything else to add?
No, you hit it both. The flags we'll talk about and the healing wall.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, I agree, and I'm all set.
All right, thank you. Moving on to 3.1, this is appointments of officials and personnel. At last night's meeting, we reviewed the contract for interim accounting help, the contracts, and we can now add names and more definitive to 3.1. So at, right now, I would like a motion to appoint Teresa Walsh to the part-time, eight-hour-per-week minimum, non-benefited position of interim town accountant from June 16th, 2021, for a term continuing until a full-time town accountant is hired.
So moved.
Second.
Could we have a roll call, please, on the motion and the second?
Joe Schenk, yes.
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, yes.
No, I'm talking about the motion. I want to go back here.
Oh.
So Chaz, could you make the motion with roll call, or do we not have to do that?
Uh...
Since you're participating remotely.
Our votes need to be roll called, to my knowledge, but I'll go back. You want me to formally make the motion?
The motion and the second. Just say, "Chaz Sexton-Duranian, so moved."
Oh, "Chaz Sexton-Duranian, so moved."
Second, Joe Schenk.
Is there any further discussion?
No.
All right, then all those in favor of the appointment for the interim town accountant, please make your thoughts known.
Joe Schenk, yes.
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. All right, 3.2, I'd like a motion to appoint Richard Sarison to the part-time, minimum-eight-hour-per-week non-benefited position of interim deputy town accountant from June 16th, 2021, for a term continuing until a full-time town accountant is hired.
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, so moved.
Joe Schenk, second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Joe Schenk, yes.
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. So congratulations, Terry and Dick, and we're looking forward to you starting. 3.3, we added three appointments for Flag Committee. Is there a motion to appoint Karen Clement to the Flag Committee? Effective today through, these are five-year appointments, correct?
Yeah.
For a five-year appointment, so through?
2026.
2026.
Who, is there going to be three, or are they staggered terms?
I believe they're all the same term, so let's just do them all together. So I retract and go forward again. I'm looking for a motion to appoint Karen Clement, Paul Smith, and Kim Gilberti to the Flag Committee for a five-year term, beginning today through June 30th, 2026.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we appoint Kim Gilberti, Paul Smith, and Karen Clement to a five-year term on the American Flag Committee to commence today, June 16th, 2021, and end June 30th, 2026.
Is there a second?
Second, Joe Schenk, second.
All those in favor?
Joe Schenk, yes.
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. All right, thank you very much. Congratulations, Karen, Paul, and Kim, and I will get the appointment letters out to you ASAP, because I know that there's an American Flag Committee meeting tomorrow evening.
Madam Chair, could you also give those names to the town clerk so they can prep the book for swear-ins?
I can do that, thank you.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, we're talking on the Flag Committee. Is it appropriate just to make a remark about the flags, as far as, or is that something separate?
Let's talk about that when we get to the wall that heals.
Okay.
All right, yeah, I think it would be appropriate.
Yeah, it would be, okay.
So, all right. Moving on to Section 5, the work session, Town Administration Updates and Reports. I want to first say that I very much appreciate the fact that Chaz has been leading the charge with IT here, and that Joe has been doing the public outreach for all the things that need to be done that we'll be talking about. So, thank you. So moving on to 5.1.
And we thank you, Madam Chair, for all the effort that you're putting in in Town Hall and everything that you're doing.
Well, thank you.
It's a challenging job, but everyone's working together, and that's really nice.
Yeah, we each have...
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, second that motion.
We each have picked a piece, and it just seems to mesh well, so I just wanted to say thank you. So 5.1.1, Guardian IT Administration and Process. So Chaz, this is yours, anything? I know you're meeting tomorrow morning with Brad here at Town Hall to go over things, equipment and all, but is there anything else that we should discuss here?
Yes, I'd like to bring up an issue that we had in our Highway Department. There was an issue with the hard drive to Jim Smith's computer. We, I shouldn't say "we," I didn't really do anything but report, but Guardian feels that there may be an issue with the hard drive being corrupted. So we made a decision that they're going to send an engineer over to mirror that hard drive, because I don't want to lose any data that's on there. And I would like permission, number one, to, you know, to let you guys know that that's what I made the decision on, and if you agree. And number two, we are getting some bids in regards to a replacement computer for him over there, and I'd like to be able to proceed with that to get numbers.
The replacement computer is because of the corrupted hard drive?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
I'm fine with that, Chaz.
So I'm going to make a motion that we continue the work that the engineer is doing with the Highway Department's computer, and to go forward with bids for a replacement computer, or just hard drive?
Well, we'll see what happens.
For whatever needs to be replaced to make it whole.
Yes, because that particular, that particular computer, as I'm seeing it here, is about eight or nine years old, and there has, I mean, it's been a workhorse for Jim. Jim is more concerned about losing data than anything else, but in order for him to continue with the good work he does over there, I think we need to give him some equipment that at least is in, you know, our century.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor to go forward. Any further discussion?
No, I think, Chaz, whatever the IT department feels is the appropriate way we need to handle this, I say move forward. So I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Joe Schenk, yes.
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. All right, anything else, Chaz, that we should talk about with respect to?
Uh, no, I'm all set as far as IT is concerned. Anything else is really, I can wait until our next session.
Chaz, can I, I just want to, I know when we were in session, you asked about if I've seen the facilities, Rob, to ask him about the equipment that's in the computer room that we thought, which is his office is set up in, and I did go in there, there's only one little piece of equipment in the corner, but Town Hall has its own computer IT room by itself.
That is correct, and I did get an email from Rob this morning. That is considered the town's data closet, and that's what I'll be looking at with Guardian tomorrow at 9 o'clock.
Okay, awesome. I just want to let you know the outcome of that. Thank you.
Yep. No, I have a master key to be able to get into the rooms that I need to get into.
There you go.
Excellent, okay. I'm going to move on to 5.1.2, the discussion of the interim TA. This is me, because this has fallen on my plate. I, you know, we put out the announcement last week, and we got the, we have groups working with us. We did receive one resume, and as of today, I still don't have one. Any further beyond that? On Monday, you gave me the go-ahead to reach out to all the other names on the list that we received from DOR, so I will be doing that by Friday. I haven't had time yesterday or yet today to get that done, but we've done a lot of other good work in the meantime.
You've got 24 hours in the day.
I know, I know. So I will be, I hope that at our next meeting on Monday, I'll have more to report on that.
Very good, good job.
I would like to get someone in place by the end of the month.
Yeah.
But if we have to go into the next fiscal year, we will. It just depends on what we get back.
We are moving forward, though. I mean, we've got the interim accountants here helping. It just, it's a process, but I think everybody's working due diligently to do the right thing and make things happen.
And I should have done this back at the appointments, but it goes with interns. I was going to notify Terry and Dick of their appointments and see when they would like to meet with us.
Yeah.
So I might make that a Zoom meeting, based on their availability.
Okay.
So, could be this week.
That's fine.
It would be Friday.
Do we need to have it posted today, then, for Zoom meeting for Friday?
Ooh.
So do we, well, Madam Chair, do we need to?
I guess we don't all need to.
We don't need to meet? I mean, I have the confidence in you. We've already approved them. Meet with them. You can meet individually if it's okay with Chaz. I don't know your thought, Chaz, but, you know, just get them up and running. I mean, once we're in a meeting, then we'll bring them in and just, you know, formally introduce ourselves and meet them in person.
What do you think?
Yeah, my understanding is they understand our situation, and I think they would be comfortable with that, so we could meet them when we can.
Okay.
But I'll make it an effort that when they get in here, that we get to see them at least the first week that they're here.
Okay, so what I will do, then, is forward the formal contracts to them for signing. I'm going to need you two to sign this as well.
I can sign them on Sunday morning. Is that too late? Or if the two of you, we really just need two, right?
If I can get them printed here before you leave, Joe, and Chaz, we could get your signature, correct? You'll be in tomorrow.
Yes, I come in, yeah, I come in on Thursday. I'll be in tomorrow, so I can sign them then.
All right, so we can get our signatures on the contracts. So, oh, you have them, then?
I have these printed.
Joe, I'm so glad you print things out.
So, I have both of them here, but I don't have two copies, but we can use...
We can make copies.
We, yeah, I have both of them. So I have both printed out. If we can have somebody make copies, perfect.
All right, thank you very much.
Well, there you go. So, yeah, I'll sign here today, and then you're going to have Chaz.
And then I'll just invite them to come in to sign the contracts and to meet with me and to get started.
And then Monday, when I'm back, I will personally come in to try to meet them or see when they're in their office.
Yeah, if you could each drop by to meet them, and then we can invite them to a meeting.
Put it on the 29th meeting?
Yeah, okay.
Just, you know what I mean? Just so we formally introduce them and we meet them.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
All right.
Very good, nice job.
All right, so I will take care of that today. All right, so that's the interim TA. I hope to have a more robust report on, I think our next meeting is Monday, correct?
Mm-hmm, correct.
So this agenda is incorrect, moving down to 5.4. I have the next meeting is June 18th at noon, but we're not going to do that, 18, 19, 20. It'll be June 21st.
At 12 o'clock, right?
At noon, yeah, and I will set up a Zoom link for that.
Awesome.
And get that posted.
Very good.
ASAP. Has to be posted by tomorrow at noon, so I'll get that. But we'll talk about that later. All right, discussion of temporary part-time BOS executive assistant duties. For this, I have a letter from HR that I put in SharePoint this morning, where it's about, it's from the payroll department, and I thought I had it here. So, we are looking for some guidance as to what to do with the portion of the new employee packets that are not payroll-related. Normally Carolyn would create an HR folder to keep in her office and take care of any further requirements or incomplete forms or packets. So the question was what to do with relation to that, and there are two new employees that this would affect. So I think that it's time for us to look at getting some executive assistant temporary help in the office, so I wanted to know your thoughts on that.
Madam Chair, if we're going to talk anything in regards to the executive assistant's position or any time, I would like to recuse myself from any conversation.
All right, I'm good with that. Chaz, how about you?
I'm okay with that.
So if you would like to leave the room, Joe?
Come get me when it's done.
I'll come get you when we're done talking. So just a minute, Chaz, until Joe is out. All right, so Chaz, what are your thoughts on this?
Madam Chair, I'm very, I feel that a lot of the information and duties that need to be done really should be done with somebody who has either had the position or worked very close with an individual that has had the position. There are currently employees within Town Hall that I think might be able to fit the bill, but it would be something that we would need to approach their supervisors and ask them if they would be able to devote some time to help us out with it. That is my first initial thought, to see we do have people that I'm sure would be interested in that. Having said that, it is a temporary position, and at least if we could see if somebody would be interested within Town Hall right now, that could give us a few hours and the supervisor would be amenable to that, I think right now that would be our best avenue to look to.
Okay, so, yeah, so an internal posting, more or less, with supervisor approval? And what I would like to do, Chaz, is define the duties and the amount of time per week we think it might take.
Mm-hmm.
So if you're okay with it, I could work on that, and we could run it by Kate or perhaps the union. I'm not sure how this fits, if, you know, because some of our employees are union employees, some of our employees are not union employees in town. I know that this position is a non-union position.
Correct.
But I don't know if there's any complication, I don't know if complication is the right word, any considerations that need to be made because of that.
My thoughts are, let's, I can, I can, well, I'll move for the chair to write the job description for the temporary part-time BOS executive assistant and run it by the union representative.
Okay.
If he's okay with that, then we can move forward. If he's not okay with that, then we would probably need to have an executive session.
All right, okay, so, all right, I will second that motion. All those in favor?
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. Okay, so what I will do, then, is work on the position, run it by the union rep and Kate, our counsel, and we'll see where we go with that.
Correct. And the duties, to me, are more of the immediate, the correspondence, the, you know, the, we are, we, the Selectmen, are working on the minutes and the agendas. I think we need to keep that for now, and just being able to, you know, I know that there's road opening permits that we signed that need to be given back to Highway. Those kinds of things can actually be expedited as quickly as possible.
So...
I think that that position would be able to do that.
Okay, so I'll write it up for correspondence and requirements based on things that happen at the meeting, but not the minutes or anything like that.
Correct, correct.
Okay, I'll work on the wording and get that to you. Okay, hopefully I'll have that for Monday, so we can get going on that to get, because things are starting to pile up, and it would be good to have that, not really pile up, but it would be good to have that support. So, all right, thank you very much. I think we can bring Joe back in. So I will go and get him. Do you see him out there?
I'll go get him.
Can you go get him, Dave? Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right.
All right, so Joe is rejoining us.
I'm coming, I'm getting here.
5.1.4 is a discussion of the Town Hall office space for the, where will we locate the interim TA, the BOS executive assistant temporary help? The TCAM facilities, the Board of Selectmen office, it's become apparent to me that we need at least a desk somewhere to keep things, to share.
Right.
I, for one, am uncomfortable having all the papers in the hallway right now, when we don't have staff in either room, so I just this morning moved all the hallway papers back to on top of the file cabinet and the executive assistant office. But the other thing is the accountants. Do we have enough room for them downstairs in the accounting office? Are there three desks in there?
Never been in there.
No, I've been in there, but I haven't really noticed how many desks there are. It might be good to make sure we have the space that we can, you know, house everybody.
Yeah.
So thoughts? What do you guys think?
I believe that we shouldn't really be doing any shuffling around right now with any other space for that. We have a freeze on spending, we have a freeze on moving people around.
Well, we do not have a freeze on spending.
Wow, a freeze on, on...
Do we? I mean, there was a spending freeze put on a year ago that hasn't really been lifted, but based on things that have been submitted, you know, for departments.
We've been approving because it's towards the end of last year's budget, anyway.
Correct, this fiscal year, the closing of the current fiscal year, okay?
Correct.
All right, so continue your thought. I interrupted you.
Right, so as far as, you know, where the current, or the past TA's office, you know, I think that should be right now for the interim TA. I would like to be able to see, now I know that TCAM was looking for another spot to house. My only concern is I would like to be able to put the Selectmen information in that particular office, the executive assistant office, or the Selectmen's office, or whatever that is, to be able to be locked, and then just the Selectmen and the temporary part-time BOS executive assistant have access to that room. That's my thought.
But where are we going to put TCAM for now?
There was a question about, there is a place that's across the hall in Land Use. I guess there's a little area there. I heard, I'm not really sure. I'll have a better idea when I get there.
But what about the wiring? Well, you're going to look into all that? I mean, I think that could be an issue, because everything's wired to that corner of that building, and I don't know if that works, but, you know, let's have you deal with IT and maybe deal with Dave and TCAM and just figure out what we need to do.
Yeah, because we need to find a secure spot, and if that's not going to be able to be done, then we need to move everything over to where the TA was as far as the, you know, making sure that's secure with all the paperwork and stuff for now. I mean, that might be an easier, an easier thing to do.
To move all the executive assistant things into the TA's office?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, move all that over there, and then we can just get, we got the code to go into there, and we can go in there, we got a desk to sit at if we have to, and, you know.
Okay.
It's a start, it's a start.
What about TCAM? Back to TCAM? Dave is here, he has his finger up. Do you want to talk?
I'll put two for him.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, the, right as you go in the Land Use door, the front door there immediately on the right, there's a closet-sized space there. It's a little bigger than a closet. It's where the master panel for the alarm system is. The consultant that we've been working with said that that could be a large enough space to move Hartley's equipment into, and then we could run it from there. However, and Joe hit it, hit the nail on the head, we're going to have to rewire from here and there all the way across Town Hall and then drop it down into the room. That's going to require hiring an electrician, actual an electrical contractor. We talked a little bit with Rob Bochamp about that. He's got more detail on what needs to be done to get the wiring sent back over there. So it's not like something you could do in... So it's not like something you could do in the weekend.
Okay, so...
But it's good to get in front of it right now.
We need to think about that. I'm wondering, this is just a thought that just came into my head, what if we, the facilities office is downstairs, right?
Yep, and that downstairs next to meeting room, too.
And where, where is IT? In that same room?
Well, there's only one little piece of equipment, like a computer-sized piece of equipment sitting in the corner. All the rest are just shelves, and I think there's just, there's a couple of desks.
That's more like a workstation. The actual IT room that Chaz is going to be looking at is...
It's outside the downstairs door.
You go in through the building department, and there's a locked door in the left-hand hand house. In there, there's a closet where you go in, the server and other equipments.
Oh, air-conditioned, everything.
Well, here's just something to think about. You know the space between the two offices and the selectmen's chamber? Would it make sense to put a desk there for the executive assistant? No, out there.
Out there, in the lobby?
Where the copy room is. Kind of rearrange things and put a desk out there.
Well, there is a desk there.
But I want to rearrange so that the desk would be facing, so when people come in, they would be immediately greeted.
Like a receptionist.
Yeah, and then have the TA's office be both the interim TA and the executive assistant more of the, and have all the locked files in there, and then leave TCAM in the big room, allow a BOS desk in there for the selectmen to use.
For non-confidential.
Where, for non-confidential things, just for, you know, whatever. I don't know, we might want to just rethink the space.
Yeah, well, let's all put our head together, look around the building, and next meeting we bring it up again.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that. I'd like to be able to talk with Guardian and find out what we're doing. I'd also probably want to touch base with Dave to see what his thoughts are, too, before we even, you know, but the, I think for now, we should take the document sensitive, the sensitive documents and just keep them in the, in the now TA's office for, instead of leaving them out on the table.
Yep, put them on that desk in there for now, yep.
Okay, so...
I offer a partial suggestion and something.
Sure.
Get one of those small home safes, portable-type safe. You could lock documents in there, just three or four, you have the combination of that.
But if we have the combination to that door, we're the only ones that can go in anyway. Because that code has been changed, Madam Chair, and I think the three BOS, all of us have a code, so I think that's, I think that's what we should do, move it into that room right now and go from there.
Okay.
I think that's the only, only thing we can do.
All right.
I think that's a start.
All right, 5.1.5, finances. So I guess to finish the discussion on space, we'll all think about this.
Yep.
Make a, I'll put this back on an agenda for Monday. Is that too soon?
Yeah.
Yeah, I put it on for the 29th.
The 29th, okay.
Yeah, I agree.
All right. All right, moving on to finances, not a lot to say there. I met with Jared, we're trying to get the, to finish up the agreement, the tentative agreement that we signed to get all those, the payroll in order.
Yep.
So payroll can move on to fiscal year '22 and look at the retroactive piece of that as well. So we're continuing that. Jared's been doing great work getting the spreadsheets together, he and Anthony, to allow us to do that.
Okay.
Yep, I agree. Both of them are working really hard with us, and I appreciate their help.
So we, yeah, so we met last night and approved the tentative agreements, so we're rolling with that. We're hoping to have numbers in place by, I don't know the date, not this Friday, but next Friday. It would be good to have that, so that they can get moving for payroll to enter the data, so everybody gets paid appropriately in the new fiscal year. The good news is that it's not until July that the pay, the first fiscal year '22 payroll is, so. All right. 5.1.6, that's all I have on finances, unless either of you...
I would just, if you could, there are, when I was talking with Mr. Smith in the Highway Department, there's road opening, and there's a water road opening that does need to be signed. If you could put that into the Highway mailbox downstairs and let me know, and I'll let him know that it's there.
Okay. Does it need, does it need to be stamped? Do you know? Probably.
Well, it needs a signature because Unitile wants to, wants to sign copy.
Okay. All right, we can do that? I'll do that today.
Thank you.
Anything else under finances?
No.
All right, moving on, 5.1.6, the wall that heals. Joe, you got information on this?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to first give the town maybe a little more update as far as the healing wall that is coming to Townsend. I have been in contact today with Russell Jobe, J-O-B-E, hope I said that correct. He just sent me a little brief update as far as what's involved, and I'd just like to read this so that the community will understand how in detail this is. So the wall is scheduled to be in Townsend the week of July 1 through the 4th. On January 29th, a safety walk-through and escort will be done. At 9:00 AM, there will be a site walk, safety through, through at North Middlesex Regional High School with the Vietnam Wall organizers, organizers members, the Townsend Wall Committee members, the Townsend Fire Department, the North Middlesex Regional High School Facility crew, and Townsend representative. All Townsend's selectmen, department, and committee reps are free to attend this walk-through. At 2:00 PM, the wall will be escorted from Fort Devens to Townsend, 2:00 PM on the 29th, just to make it correct. 2:00 PM on the 29th, the wall will be escorted from Fort Devens to Townsend by an estimated 300 motorcycles, state police motorcycles, and helicopters, and about 50 vehicles, Jeeps from the Massachusetts Wicked Jeep Club, scheduled to arrive at the North Middlesex Regional High School at about 3:00 PM. There will be a group, group photo taken after the wall arrives at North Middlesex Regional as customary for all riders and escort folks. The trucks will also be staged at that point. It will sit in, it will sit for the remainder of the visit. On June 30th, the wall, building the wall. At 8:00 AM, the assembly of the wall starts and will be completed by the end of day, about eight hours. Being there, being there are no doors, gates, et cetera, to keep people out during building the wall. There will be volunteers to help maintain safety. After the wall is finished, and from that point until it leaves, it is technically open for visitors. Volunteers will be staffing the exhibit 24 hours a day until breakdown is complete on July 4th at 4:00 PM. So that's one of the things we really need, is many volunteers from the community. You do not need to be a veteran, anybody that's willing to help, it has to be staffed 24 hours a day. On July 1st, it's going to be a welcoming ceremony. At 5:00 PM, we will be having a welcoming ceremony that will last no more than one hour at the wall. The itinerary will be forthcoming as it is compelled. I would expect our town representatives to be at this ceremony, and a couple to briefly speak as well. More to come. July 3rd, there'll be a remembrance ceremony. At 5:00 PM, this ceremony will be similar to the first one, and again, the itinerary will forthcoming. July 4th, the wall will be disabled, dissembled. At 2:00 PM, the tentative time that the assembly is scheduled to start, based on the number of visitors still at the wall, the truck will leave when completed. So as we get more information, I will forward the information to the chair. We will post it on the town website. Once again, once there's more information, hopefully everybody will get posted on all the town websites. So they've asked that we put out, this is a once-in-a-lifetime, that this wall may make it to Townsend. I think every citizen resident, once we know the exact route, I do believe the tentative route now is coming up Route 13, taking a right on 119, going down through the harbor. The wall will extend, the ride will extend from there down into 113 in Pepperell. It will make its way to the Rotary on 111 to go by the Pepperell Vietnam Memorial that's there, then return back up 111, 113, onto 119, and it will finish its final stop at the high school. So anybody that's interested will get a little better exact times, but it would really be nice to see our community, our residents, everybody on the side of the road to support that. That's all I have.
All right, and I guess, too, the flag, American Flag Committee meeting is tomorrow, so...
And also, the American Flag Committee is tomorrow. I have reached out to Mr. Ossinot to explain that, you know, we really need all the American flags to be hung. I did reach out to, one of the persons that reached out to us that, you know, willing to help. I know, Chaz, you were going to reach out to find out about a bucket truck, so I relayed that info to Mr. Ossinot, so hopefully in their meeting tomorrow night, that they will expedite and get the town to have all our flags. It's, it's something that has to be done. This is something that we have to honor all the vets throughout all divisions of the Armed Forces.
I agree 100% Joe with you on that, and I have had conversations this morning, and we are moving forward. I'm very glad that we could appoint the Flag Committee now, get them sworn in, they can make a couple of decisions, and then we'll be able to move forward with getting those flags up.
And it's very important that those flags have to be up before the 29th, before that procession comes into this town. It would be a sad day for the town of Townsend not to have those flags up, where this is a once-in-a-lifetime to honor all of the veterans throughout the Armed Forces.
Correct.
So what I would like to do is, on the website, put up on the red banner, the wall that heals, with the dates so that people know, and then put a piece, you know, when you click on it, the read more, put the schedule, and then I will also put it under news.
Yep.
And see if I can find a picture that is related to this, that I could post, so...
If you go on to the wall, the moving wall, they do have several pictures that you can grab one out of. I was looking at that today.
Okay.
There's a lot of work that goes into this, not only just to set it up, but the amount of work that all these volunteers and all these people have done to bring that to the community. So now it's our time for the community to shine, and we need to put our best foot forward and be there for them.
All right.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks, Chaz, both of you, and we'll get this posted so that the town can know about it.
Yep.
So the people can be ready and out on the road when the, you know, lining the roads when they come through on the 29th.
Yeah, and we'll get an exact date, not exact date, exact time, and the exact route that it will be, we'll try to post it. Hopefully, all the Facebook pages in town will put everything up on all their pages. This is something that's really important, so let's do what we got to do to make it happen.
All right.
Okay.
Moving on to 5.1.7, this was added. I put this on here. I'd like to issue a reminder to all boards and committees, elected and appointed officials regarding decorum at meetings, just so that people understand how the agendas work, how you get something put on an agenda, and what is expected behavior at public comment sessions. So I was thinking I'd write something up and run it by you guys, and we can get something out maybe next week.
Madam Chair, I think that's a great idea. You know, I truly apologize to any citizens that may have seen or heard what happened last night. We, as a community, we're not like that, we're better than that, and we all have to work together, and it's very important that we may not all agree with each other, but we have to respect each other. And that's where I think it's going to be really important that we, as a community, a group, and all boards stick together.
So I will then write something up, and you guys can take a look and see what you think, and we'll go from there. Are you good with that, Chaz?
Yep, I'm good with that.
All right, so that's all I had on that. 5.1.4...
I forget, you can't see my head shaking.
Oh, we see it.
All right. Moving on to the notice that we just got today about the open meeting law. So this was sent to us from me, Tallar Menen Costa, our town council, and the legislature has made a decision on this. So I'm looking at this.
This just got CC'd out today?
This just came within probably an hour.
So noon time or so?
Ink's still wet.
The, the act extends, so under the open meeting law, the act extends Governor's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law until April 1, 2022, at which time the extension will be repealed. Public bodies may therefore continue to conduct their meeting in accordance with the order suspending the open meeting law, and may continue to have remote meetings in full. So because of this, we can do Zooms.
So my opinion, Madam Chair, I mean, we're getting into vacation times for everybody, summertime. I would, I think coming in to this hall, in this room, is really great. I like to see the citizens sitting in front of us, and I think it's, you know, face-to-face is a much nicer way to deal with, but, you know, I think maybe the main, our main meetings have them in the chambers, and then any of our work sessions, anything else like that, maybe via Zoom. It'll make it a little easier for all of us. I know Chaz has his job, I have a job, everyone has things. We'll do whatever we need to do to make this work for everybody, but I would like to see us maybe think about that.
Chaz, what are your thoughts?
My thoughts are that exactly. I'd also like to go forward with the investigation with the owl technology, because that way we can then have hybrid meetings. According to the, what was decided, it was until April of 2022, so that gives us plenty of time to be able to get the hardware, software in place to be able to do that.
And especially if we have, you know, Chaz, if you're away on vacation, but you still want to be able to be part of the selectmen's meeting, we have that technology, you, myself, or Veronica, we can zoom in, still be part of it, and still be able to have our meetings and have everybody involved.
Okay, so I guess, do we need a motion on this even? I don't even know.
I don't think we do.
I don't think, I mean, it's the governor's, governor's statement, and so we're just...
It's fault on our posting procedure, so if we are going to have a Zoom meeting, we would need to post it with the Zoom information on it. If we are having it in person, then we just wouldn't, wouldn't have, you know, we would say that this would be an in-person meeting.
All right, so what I'm going to do then is get Zoom links for all of our work sessions, and I have to have one by tomorrow so I can post our Monday meeting with a Zoom link. So all... Um, so all our work sessions, if I'm hearing what you're saying, all our work sessions will be Zooms, our main meetings will be in person and, uh, we will, um, see if TCAM can, uh, we can direct TCAM to investigate the Owl technology and, uh, see what the pricing is on that and the connections, what?
It's a thousand dollars.
Oh, it's a thousand dollars, so we'll look and see.
But that might be able to be used to COVID funds.
Maybe we can do COVID funding on that, well, I'll find out.
I actually looked into that, we can use that as COVID funding.
So, um, I, I think then that we want to start, um, the purchase for that.
Can get one here in three days.
Um, Dave says, I don't know if anybody that heard, uh, we can get one here in three days.
I think it's something which you did.
So what I'm going to do then, I'll get a Zoom link for all of our meetings, our main meetings will be in person.
Yep.
In person here, but if we have the Owl up and running.
If somebody's away, we can come in.
We can also, so I'll, I'll do a Zoom link for that as well.
And then I do believe, Madam Chair, if you post it as a Zoom link, and I think if for some reason you're in town hall or Chaz, we can still have that meeting.
Right.
If two sitting here, if I'm not here or Chaz, we'll let continue.
Right, even if one of us is sitting.
Right.
Right, I was going to say, if it is, uh, the governor's extended the previous order, then you don't need the two physically present anymore, you can just go back to.
That is, that is absolutely correct.
Yep.
All right.
And I think that will be a great help to us.
All right, so I'll get Zoom links for all our meetings.
Yep.
That we know about, okay, so that, um, uh, anything else on that then?
No.
All right, so, um, this is good news, so, uh, any reports from board liaisons?
No, I don't have any, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I do not have any.
I, I do intend, uh, to attend tomorrow evening's, um, American flag committee meeting because I am the liaison, they're an appointed board.
Yep.
So just to know that, but I have no report other than that.
Uh, and then, Madam Chair, do we just, we'll sign these, we just discussed that we're going to sign the agreements, the contracts for the two.
For the two interim town accountants.
So we have copies of them right here, so Chaz, if you come in and you sign them, this will be all done.
Right.
Yep, I'll be there tomorrow morning.
Were you looking for flags, is that what I'm trying to understand?
Well, there's flags up right now, but what we did is the flag committee, over the past couple of years, while the flags haven't been up and.
Could I have a point of order, um, can we talk about that afterwards because I really need to get back to work?
Yeah, let's, let's, that's not on the agenda, but you guys are welcome to talk as soon as we're done.
Yep.
Um, all right, so, uh, thanks, Chaz.
Yeah.
Announcements and communications, any, any other letters that came in? I don't think I have.
I don't have anything, no.
Anything else? All right, so, um, our next meeting, we have work sessions scheduled for Monday, Wednesday and Friday next week, 21, 23 and 25, nothing for Friday this week and the following week, it would be June 28, um, 30 and July, July 2.
No, I've got to be the 29th, ain't it?
And on the 29th, we have a regular meeting at 6:00 PM and we will also have, uh, 3:00 PM at the high school for the wall, so if we're going to be present for, for that.
Well, I think you need to post that because I don't know exact time, if we're all going to be there, I think we need to post if they want us.
All to be there, all right. So I'm going to do June 29th at 3:00 PM and at 6:00. But the 3:00 PM won't need a, a Zoom because it's an.
So the 29th, it's just, it's coming through town, uh, they say we all can do the walk-through as long as we don't have any.
That's at 9:00 AM.
Yeah, no discussion, 3 o'clock it's going to be here, but there's no, no talking until the 30th, when the wall's built.
Okay, so it's the 30th.
And then July 1st at 5:00 PM, we have to post.
30th and July 1st.
Yep.
Those two, okay, so not the 3:00 PM on the 29th, okay.
That's going to be kind of, we can all be there as it pulls in, as long as we don't have any discussion about anything, I don't think we're in violation of anything.
Yes, same with the 30th and the 1st, if we're not discussing, I'll find out.
But find out, verify that.
Okay, all right.
Madam Chair, make a motion, we adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning at, what time is it, 2, 3:27?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes, thank you, Chaz and Joe.
Chaz, thank you, see you.
Bye.
Bye.